All right, good morning, everybody. We'll go ahead and call this special update meeting regarding the storm recovery to order. As you all know, I believe we've communicated that the primary concern for today's meeting is getting an update from staff on sort of where we stand in the aftermath of this hurricane and also to give an update on across the organization from our finances, from obviously our goal to get 100% restoration, an update on how our law enforcement efforts have been going, what's been happening in the city in this intervening time. There will obviously be an appropriate point, that may not be today, for us to do our own sort of analysis on what's working, what isn't. I assume you all are doing that on a pretty regular basis. In fact, I know for a fact you're doing that on a pretty regular basis. But before we go, you know, too much further, I want to recognize that there are a number of folks in the room, a number of partner organizations, and I can't call you all out by name, but faith houses and charity organizations who have given extremely selflessly of their organization and their organization's time to help this community get through what has been one of the worst storms our community has confronted in 30 years. So for those of you who have been a part of that effort, I cannot, 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 on behalf of this government, on behalf of our city, thank you all enough. It means, it means the world to the people of this community that you all have stepped in during their time of need. I also want to say to the city staff as well as to the county staff who've been so premier at the table here, I've watched you pull incredibly long hours. The crew workers who even as we speak are right now on somebody's pole, in somebody's yard, on some street corner, on some pole line, trying to make sure that we can get to our goal of 100% restoration of energy in this community. Our workers are pulling 16-hour shifts. Our crews are up 24 hours a day and are working hard to recover from this storm. And I want you all to know, and I want them to know, that the citizens of this community overwhelmingly support the efforts that they have undertaken to get this community back whole. And so please extend our appreciation. We said earlier this week, based off of the information that was provided by staff, after their thorough evaluation of the entire electric system and our customer base, that we would try to get this community, we would set it a goal to get this community back to 90-plus percent of our capacity by a week, Thursday. You all will give your report, but I know that we are either at that number or close to it, and you've done that, and today is Tuesday. It's still unfortunate because there are still so many thousands, Rob, and we all know this, that are still out of, out of power. And they are, they've been extremely patient with our efforts, and you all have done extremely well in trying to make sure that we meet that need. But to those individuals particularly, those households, those mothers, fathers, grandparents, college students and otherwise who are still in our community without power, we want them to know that help is still on the way, to not lose faith in that process, that there are folks who are working around the clock to make sure that we can, that we can cure that issue. It's not hard, it's not easy, and we know that. We also said that by yesterday, we would make sure that all of the schools have 100% power and time for school to open today if the superintendent had chosen, and you all met that benchmark as well. We've coordinated over eight different utilities and the ramping up of additional resources even within those utilities to respond to this crisis, and you all have done a yeoman's job at doing that as well. And for a system that was damaged by this storm, over 80%, you have taken a system that was built 121 years ago and practically interrupted, if not in some cases drastically impacted. 120-year-old system, 21-year-old system that was impacted in one storm overnight and had brought us back almost whole from the infrastructure standpoint, and now we're obviously at the distribution phase. My hope, as I said earlier at the end of this exercise, will think of whatever reforms that need to take place, conduct our own probably internal at a staff-level audit, but I think also at the elected official level at the appropriate time. We'll all have to sit down and figure out from our community's policies, our community's ordinances, a joint coordinated response team between all of our surrounding communities and figure out how we do this better, because there's, without a doubt, we've not been perfect in this process. And now is not the time to talk about all whatever imperfections, because our staff morale needs to remain at the highest level possible. But I'm certain all of us, if we could think deeply about things we might do differently, some of us could generate one, two, or more, things that we would do to make sure that we make this more seamless in the future. So with that, I just want to thank you all for, for this opportunity. Thank you for the work that you're doing. Commissioners, I know we want to hear from them, but I want to make sure that if anyone has any opening comments, that we allow that to happen, and then we obviously want to hear from our staff. If there's none, we'll go ahead and throw it over to you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, obviously first of all is thank you for your leadership. We've stayed in close contact since probably Wednesday, and I do appreciate your feedback, your comments, your information as it flowed through you, as times have changed and social media has become a wonderful, strong tool. Information flows in from all different directions. As the mayor said, this is not a post-incident report. We have with the county and the EOC, the sheriff's office, obviously part of the protocol is to continue to take notes and observe at all stages of any event for things that we note could be improved, could be done better, could be changed. And that will take obviously place after the gathering of all that information, talking to you individually and talking to other members of the community. We will have a post-incident report at some point after the most important part of all of this, which is the restoration of normalcy to the community. I believe that we have, of all the storms I worked, I think we've gotten back to normalcy considering the extent of the event faster than we ever have. As I drove in this morning, the buses were running, the garbage was being picked up, debris was being picked up, street sweeper was working. So some of the streets that I drove through this morning were clean and people were moving around. If the unfortunate people that didn't have electricity obviously don't feel the same way, but the rest of the community was moving around and it was normal traffic, people going to work on a post-game day. So as the mayor said, the, all the schools are up and energized, all the universities are up and energized, all the key facilities are up and energized. So that's sort of, we have, we've made our mark on, on the electric system, and obviously all the other systems are up and go. And the electric system is, if you work from the power plants in, as you know, from big to small. So everything, the power plants, transmission lines, the substations, and all the circuits are ready to go. Obviously, within the circuits, you've got certain segments, and I spoke to a gentleman this morning who is in that position, where a particular segment may be affected, and we fed around it, and obviously we'll get back to it. So the heavy work now would be the branches coming off those, those systems, and obviously different skill level, different needs there, and Rob will, will speak to that in a few minutes. But, so that's what's going on today, going back to before the storm. So for the, as soon as we realize the storm may have an effect on us, obviously those things change, but we prepare anyway. You know, whether it hits you or not, you better be prepared, and I believe we were. So what happens is everyone, all the planning starts, the EOC starts to get activated. Internally, we start activating our, for electric, our mutual aid agreements. We have agreements with every, most municipal utilities in the state, and we start getting those done. Obviously, everybody starts calling everybody because nobody knows where the storm is actually going to hit. So everybody's on ready. We secured hotel rooms, we secured meals, we got it all ready. On the infrastructure side, obviously we engage our debris contractor that we have under contract for, for storms, and we get them ready. So all the planning that goes into effect to make sure that as the storm hits, we're ready to respond to it on all the levels. So that was done, the mutual aid was called, debris removal was done. One part that I don't need a post-incident report to, to, with your authority, with approval, I would like to engage administrative help for FEMA preparation. We don't have that on the contract. In the past, we've, we've done it internally. I think in this case, I would like to go out and engage someone that does this for a living to help us make sure that we have all the right documentation and so forth. We're doing things the right way to maximize the probability of us getting federal funding. So I thought we went back, and I know in this community, the benchmark-
Mayor, could I interrupt just for a moment? I move that we authorize the city manager to get FEMA administrative assistance.
There's a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to procure administrative support on the FEMA assistance and the FEMA application. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. And Mr. City Attorney, we did not advertise that votes would be taken for the meeting, and so you'll have to advise us at the appropriate time what-
I think, and given the emergency nature of the situation, that's fine. I think we do, since we have already taken one motion, we need to allow for public comment now that we're taking action.
We'll do that. Thank you.
Sorry for the interruption. Thank you, sir. So in our community, the benchmark for storm events has always been Kate. It was a few years before I was here, but when any event comes through, everyone compares Kate, you know, and the devastation of that event in our community. So, so we went back and looked at, compare Kate to Hermine, and surprising to me, they were strikingly similar. So they were both category one hurricanes, they both had sustained winds around the 45 mile-per-hour winds, they all, they both had peak winds in the high, in the mid to high 60s, on and on. So most of the, the measures of the storm were very similar. And we went back and, so they had about 108,000 people out at that time, as you know, our number was in the 70s. It took, during Kate, it took four days to get 65% of the folks back on electricity. So our utility crews, with the help of our, of our partners, had us at 90% in the same period of time. So I think it's a, it's a measure that our infrastructure is better, and our response to that infrastructure is, is also better. A lot of it is technology, a lot of it is just learning from, from post-incident reports as we go on. Back during Kate was the first time that the city was placed under curfew. This time, and we can't thank the community enough for, for reacting to the storm in a very positive way. I think the outpouring of support that the mayor talked about, you know, people like Lisa Brown, who made me cry, and, and other folks like that. Anyway, so the, our crime numbers are no different than any other day. I think that the police chief and the sheriff working together like never before, in my opinion, worked hand in hand in reactivating our crew, our police force, and, and keeping, and really exercising wonderful judgment and visiting folks that we kept getting from, hey, this person has a particular problem, you know, whether it was medical or comfort or whatever, and the police and the sheriff's deputies reacted to it crazily fast in a way that normal police forces don't do, normal deputies don't do. So they went in there and took care of our citizens, one by one, providing them shelter, providing them comfort, whatever you needed, right? So very, very proud of our entire, our community for doing that. So just the EOC, let me speak a little bit about the EOC. This is the first time in our history where we've had an EOC where everybody, an emergency operations center, where everybody's been in the same room. I've been through a lot of storms, and we've always been separate. So the city's folks were at TPD, and the county EOC was somewhere else. I don't even know where they were, because I was never there. I've been here 27 years, it was-
They were to jail.
I know that we always yelled at each other over the phone. That's what I remember. And there were, there was always, obviously tempers get raw during these sort of things, and, and there was always that acrimony, if you will, between the two groups. And I think, and those were some of the post-incident reports that had, come on, guys, you know, we, we're in this together. I'm here to tell you that the work up there was collaborative, was seamless, there was one point of contact, and the ways, for, for all of us, the way EOCs are structured is there is a command center. It's a lot of military structure, if you will. So you've got a, a person that's in charge of your operations center, and everything theoretically flows through them. Obviously, operationally, for us, we have a lot of latitude and leeway in the way we do things in coordination with the EOC. Not, not, not a minute went by where every agency was not represented up there, and every agency worked together in making things happen. So all lines got, got obliterated, everything was for the community. So I'm very proud of, of Mr. Peters. Kevin Peters is our, our head, the EOC, and his, his ability to handle a lot of balls in the air at the same time. Same time, the mayor spent all the hours up there. I don't think I was ever up there when the mayor wasn't up there. In a very respectful way, in a very professional way, in a very caring way for all of us. Things don't get done unless you have the support. Each of you reached out, make sure things were good, make sure things were happening, and, but most important, keeping the citizens and trying to get them back as fast as we can. So our approach has been, let's get everybody back on as soon as we can, however we need to do that. Things that I report to you that were in public, because maybe they weren't to anybody's advantage to talk about them, but our, our sewer system was under a lot of stress during that period of time. Lack of electricity, generally you try to build sewer systems so they flow with gravity, but we know you can never, you can't always do that. So we have a great deal of what we call lift stations or, that actually pump the sewer up the hill, right? So without electricity, they become under stress. We're obviously prepared for that. I wasn't sure we were prepared for this, but, but Mike, Reese, and Tim Potter, the yeoman's work to make it happen. They, they kept it under control, they moved generators around, we moved trucks all over the city to pumping sewer out of the, out of the wells to make sure that we stayed, and we didn't have any major issues. And as the electric system came back on, then obviously that relieved the, the, the pressure, if you will, from, from, from the sewer system. We reported there were no problems with sewer, the water system, I don't believe we had any outages in water. We had a few handful of gas leaks because of tree roots breaking the lines up, they were all fixed within an hour. Dispatched crews as soon as we knew, they fixed it, they either cut it off or fixed it, one of the two. We obviously went in people's property and did some of this, we'll deal with that later. We'll probably have to go back and sod a few, because as, as, as time goes on, it'll be like, hey, you left a hole in my yard. But we'll go back and take care of those, of course.
Make sure Lou is there with you.
Yeah. Yeah. Lou, Lou, we got Lou's permission to do it. So anyway, so, so the collaboration with our partner agencies, I think, was of utmost importance. And again, the EOC is a structure that I believe will, will, will serve us well for a long time. The, the PSC facility was wonderful to work in, continues to be, as the process move on, it's been 24/7. Our call center did a wonderful job. I mean, I think this, this storm, we had a lot more resources than we've had in the past, because we had, obviously, TalGov has come a long way, and you're able to put in your outages directly. We have a couple of apps, Digitally and ePlus Online, that people use tremendously, and our online, our online tool received millions, I think over 6 million was the last number I saw, the number of hits that they received. So with that, I will turn it over to Reese, and, and we'll go down the line with short, short updates.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'll, I'll be quick, the manager did a really good job of kind of setting the stage, giving us a snapshot of where we are. I do want to reiterate, because it's something that went unnoticed in a good way, that we were able to maintain the water and sewer service, and that really makes a difference for public health and safety, we know. So that was a very good benefit. Mike Tadros is going to talk about that in a moment. But today, we obviously want to make sure we make the experts available to you. You can get a briefing, of course, we've seen easier days, your team's up to the challenge, and, and we're still at work. So we know we've got much work to do. The grid is hot. The grid is hot, it's ninety percent, which is a, a really good accomplishment. We're on pace, we're ahead of pace from what we thought we could achieve Friday. As we all weathered the storm late into the night, Thursday night into Friday morning, we all knew this would be a multiple day effort. As the daylight broke, it was very clear it would be a really big effort. And we all know, we've all been around to see the level of impact in our community. So we knew we hit the ground running right away. We'd already lined up resources from other areas. That's not limited to our electric utility. We also use mutual aid in other areas. We'll comment a little bit about that today. But we wanted to make sure we gave you an update on everything. Electric is a focus today as we speak for our community because it's such an essential service and work is still underway. But we also provide solid waste and transit, water and sewer. Public safety is a big piece of what we do in our community, of course. And so we're gonna, we're gonna kind of step through that with, we're gonna move fast because we know time's of the essence and we need to get the experts back to work. But we want to bring forward Chief Gaines and Chief DeLeo, if they'll join us at the table. They're gonna make some comments about the process, Chief Gaines, in the overall approach related to the EOC. And then Chief DeLeo, he says crime is actually, the crime rate is down, so that's a good thing. I didn't know it took a storm like this to do that, but we'll take it, right? And so, so we'll, we'll, we'll get an update on that as well. And, and before we do that, I would like to recognize all the support that we've gotten from our community partners. Rick mentioned Lisa Brown, who gave us all cards as we came up here to make us feel better. And I can tell you, that does make us feel better and we appreciate that. But as well as those communities that we've helped in the past, oftentimes you've got the emails where there'll be a disaster somewhere else, maybe downstate or in Louisiana to the west of us, we've seen those kind of disasters and our friends have helped us. So they, they answered the bell like we've answered the bell in the past and I think it is really remarkable. And so we've seen that and it's helped us to get to where we are today. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And, and the list is too long for me to call out individually, but there will be an appropriate time to recognize those. So with that, Chief Gaines, do you mind giving us a real quick update on, in terms of the emergency management effort?
Good morning.
Good morning.
And as the city manager said, the EOC was activated that Thursday morning at seven o'clock and it was, there was, there was personnel there even today. We scaled it back, obviously, but we activated it that Thursday anticipating that we would need additional resources. I worked with Kevin Peters from the county and as the city manager said, it was a seamless operation. It was great to see everyone in the same room. And as the incident commander, I took incident commander Alpha, which was the first shift. And we basically coordinated and made, made sure that the different agencies represented there got what they needed. As far as our run volume, as far as the fireside goes, run volume, there was an increase and that was due to electrical lines and so forth. Nothing out of the ordinary, actually, with the, with the storm, kind of like with crime, we didn't see structure fires, which was good. But as from the fireside, there were incidents where we went out and we provided service to the citizens, you know, especially when you're talking about elderly, asking for assistance with generators and so forth, concerned about power lines. And we prioritized that with the CDA. But the EOC worked, it was, it was, it was great to see everyone working together. We provided food for the people working in the EOC. There was relief crews for those personnel so they could go home and also attend to their family's needs. But it, it was, it was a great effort. So I think, you know, there's always room for improvement and we will look at that and we will improve on that. But what I saw that for the days that went on and seeing different people like the mayor and so forth up there, that was, that was good for the people working in the EOC to see the support. It, it made a difference, trust me on that. And so we will continue to move forward and continue to recover. That's the phase we're in right now and we will continue to give a hundred and fifty percent until it's a hundred percent.
Thank you, Chief. And Chief, Chief DeLeo?
Good morning. First, I just, and I know we could be here all day thanking people, but you, you gotta start with that because as, as everyone, you're gonna hear all day today about the team efforts. First, I gotta thank my officers. They haven't had a day off since Wednesday. They're not gonna get a day off, some of them, until Friday. And that's because life goes on and, you know, we've got a football game this weekend that we have to prepare for and staff and we're gonna have, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand visitors come in, that we gotta get ready for that, too. So there, we're, we, we've already planned that transition. So, you know, just like many other first responders, utilities, city workers, the volunteer organizations, you know, they've been working around the clock since Thursday, left their families behind, met in their own needs, not getting mad at their house without power and everything else. And they've done an amazing job and I know especially Cynthia will talk a lot about the community outreach that they help coordinate and work on. But again, they've done, done a great job and very proud to be able to represent them here this morning. I'd like to thank, you know, especially, you, you talk about the leadership, you know, Chief Gaines somehow managed to pull the daytime shift at the EOC. Somehow I got the nighttime one for the, for the first day or two. But I will tell you something, as someone who came from a different, different organization and a different part of the state, when I'm sitting there at two o'clock in the morning in the EOC and Ms. Barber's there with me, Mr. Tedder's there with me, and you see the city leadership from, from the city, they're making sure we've got what we need, working their way through and asking questions as we all go through this together, that's refreshing and that does not happen everywhere. And, and that's unique. So that, that also carries a lot of weight with the men and women who are working here and, and that's very appreciated. The community has been phenomenal, not just responding to our requests and working with a lot of the different organizations, but also supporting our, our people. People have been dropping off food and water and drinks and seeing officers out at intersections and dropping off bottles of water for them and, and everything else. And the community support has been tremendous for the first responders. I also want to take a minute and, you know, thank Chief Gaines, Chief Abrams from EMS and Sheriff Wood. The, the, the first responder leadership coordination and inter-agency coordination, we saw each other and talked to each other every day. Where any one of us needed, it was taken care of. There was no, that's not in my area, that's not, everything was, there was none of that. And, and that's again, very unique and we got a lot accomplished in a very short time. If there was a need, if somebody needed something, there was a phone call, a text message and any issues were resolved like that and the right resources were where they needed to be. So that's important for people to know about, that that kind of coordination is going on. As Chief Gaines said, as the storm is coming in, the preparation work began a couple of days ahead of time as far as scheduling, making sure the facility was secure. City fleet was, was fantastic. You know, we had three hundred people out on the streets, you know. If their cars aren't working, if we don't have fuel and our, our equipment's not there, we can't help. So again, the behind the scenes people that a lot of times don't get that recognition, obviously we're very visible, but City Fleet was tremendous in helping us get prepared and keeping us out and running as, you know, we ran into little normal maintenance issues. But, you know, we don't have a couple of days to get things turned around and fixed. So again, they were very helpful and supportive of us. Since the evening of the storm, the police department has either responded to or initiated over thirty-two hundred calls for service. We're averaging just under eight hundred calls a day. So that, that tells, that gives you a little bit idea of, of the workload that they've been responding to. Just, we, we did a breakdown. One of the things I'm very proud of, and I, I think it shows their commitment to the, to our community, is the most frequent call that we initiated were community policing encounters. They were not calls for service that somebody called in and asked for help. They were things where the officers checked out, saw someone that needed something and took care of it themselves. And they just advised the CDA that they were gonna be busy on something for a few minutes helping somebody. And that was the greatest response of any call for service that we had was our officers identifying an issue, somebody who needed help and taking care of it. And I think that speaks volumes of your agency. Alarms were high, which is, which is normal considering the storm, the weather, power interruptions, that, that's a, that's a normal thing. And then obviously the, the next biggest one were, were traffic issues related to intersections being down, some traffic crashes. We will continue to work on the education campaign that when the lights are down, it's a four-way stop. We did talk to Kevin Peters a little bit about maybe looking at doing some portable stop signs for preparation next time, just as a visual reminder for, for people. I mean, people do know, but that's something that we, he and I talked about. Our burglaries were pretty consistent with what we would normally experience in a non-storm type event. We had a couple of days where it was a little higher, a couple of days were a little lower. Knock on wood, very, we, we only had six robberies over the last five days. Two of them were carjacking that our officers caught within minutes. We had two carjackings within minutes, caught all four suspects. So again, it certainly helps when you've got all those people out there as far as aid deterrence and also a, a response. But it, it shows that, again, not only were they meeting the needs of the community, but they weren't hiding somewhere behind, behind a tree somewhere, just hanging out doing nothing. They were out there working, not only were they doing traditional police work, but they were also making sure that our community members had what they needed and helping Public safety related issue, you know, traffic points were obviously the big one between the first, you know, twenty-four hours between the power lines, trees and, and traffic signals. And dealing with traffic issues was really that first twenty-four hours, thirty-six hours. Those were obviously a, a big point of contention, making sure we had those back up and we were able to coordinate a lot of resources to the EOC again, getting generators for intersections, getting lights powered up. And that had, that made a tremendous impact on us and being able to focus on different areas really helped us out a lot as being, getting those intersections powered up to make sure people could drive around safely. And we talked about, you know, we had, again, some burglaries. We did have a few during the storm, which unfortunately we kind of expected, just people know that the power is out. You know, it did reach, we did have a couple hour window during the height of the storm where we had our people shelter in place unless there was an emergency response required. We never failed to respond to a priority one call. All of the agencies, we, we all sat down together, both chiefs and the sheriff and I, we sat down together and we coordinated a response that any priority one call would be evaluated depending on the, the weather conditions, obviously the safety of our personnel, that any priority one call that came in even during the height of the storm, we all responded to, all of our agencies. So there was never an emergency that went unmet. Non-emergency calls did get held for a, a few hour window during the height of the storm when Hermine was coming through, but those were quickly cleared up and we were almost, all our agencies were back to normal incoming calls for service in response by about six or seven o'clock the next morning. So that's how quickly all of our people jumped on those calls, got the backlog, cleared up and coordinated. Again, a lot of them were power related, towards alarms and things like that where they tripped because of the weather. We coordinated with Public Works Utilities identifying downlines, intersections, trees, road blockages and provide that information to the EOC. Sheriff, Sheriff Wood and I have, have met in person a couple of times each day and also been on the phone with each other coordinating our responses. We have worked on a plan to assist the schools when they open back up to make sure that the deputies have the assistance. They have the primary responsibility at school, the school resource deputies, but we have a plan to assign two officers to each school at minimum for both start times and dismissal times to assist with traffic. We're expecting that many more people will probably be driving their children to school, at least the first day, with concerns over bus routes, making sure that their, their children are safe getting there as kind of life gets back to normal. So we already have a plan to assign people there to help with that process. Again, working with Public Works, with barricade placement and retrieval of the generators and relocating them. Joint Public Information Officer Northway and some of our folks working with Allison through the EOC and getting information out and, and her team. And also we've worked on already putting out information related to consumer fraud tips. Unfortunately, you know, I've certainly experienced in South Florida before I came here, you know, there, there are people who will try to take advantage of this, untrupulous business practices with licensing and putting out information and tips and how to verify that. And so we've already started coordinating that and trying to be proactive and we'll continue to put out those reminders. We, like I said, we've, I touched on at the beginning, we've started already, started trying to work on transitioning and planning again for this weekend with knowing the influx of people that we're gonna have and that we need to be prepared. We are starting to work to transition to, we're still, all our personnel are working, but they are working instead of a twelve hour shift now, they start to transition to their normal work hours. So everyone will still be out there for the next few days, but they will be transitioning to their normal ten hour shift or eight hour shift, depending what their assignment is. Everyone will be in uniform, so as our investigators now have to start catching up on the backlog of cases and they're the ones that we're using at the schools in between, they'll start on their cases, but they will be prepared to respond if there's some other emergency event in uniform as well. And we will be prepared and ready to go, you know, this weekend for when we get all our visitors in for, for this weekend. We could spend hours and hours talking about the outreach efforts, but ACN Barber's gonna touch on those on, on her part about community engagement. And thank you for, for your support and what you've provided for us.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you both chiefs. Thanks for that. Reese, before you call the next person, I, and the chief's remarks about the intersections and the traffic signals, Kim McDougall, chief of staff to the governor, is here and early on in the process, the governor called and offered the support of the Department of Transportation in getting generators at our intersections. And I think I saw the secretary, Jim.
Thank you.
Secretary of Transportation, they worked alongside our, our crews and established over two hundred generators at intersections because that whole recognition of a four-way stop was lost on a lot of us. I mean, a lot of folks just kind of blew through, it was very unsafe. So getting those, getting those back up were extremely important for public safety. So shout out, thanks to the governor for the offer and, and secretary for the assistance of, of the DOT staff in getting those distributed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
The difference in, in, as Tallahassee is a community, I'm from Homestead, generators in plain view would not last long.
Not a chance.
In the three oh five.
Not a chance.
No, no, we did.
They would not last long in the three oh five. And, and they've been unmolested.
They've, they've been there and that has been a point of emphasis for officers to go by. Listen, we had some skin in the game on that one. The generator out there meant we were not there directing traffic. So there were some security measures put in place and we helped patrol, but the, the secretary helping out with that made a tremendous impact on our lives and our ability to provide so many more services and that was key.
Of course. Thank you, commissioners, chiefs. We're gonna call Mike Tadros, he's gonna give us an update on our water, sewer and gas system. And then we'll move to Rob McGarry, who's gonna give us an update on our electric grid.
Good morning, Commissioner, Mayor. I just want to share also with the city manager earlier comment, I'm very proud to share with you that the city has not lost any of our customers in the water, sewer and the gas system. Also, our stormwater did function as expected. We only have one road closure for half a day with Weems Road, we know that. This is five inches in a very few, in a short period of time, but the systems function exactly as it. And that's attributed largely to how well we prepared for the storm.
And Mike, there are, there are plans to address, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are plans to address that Weems Road situation. We've known about that for months, years, and I know there are plans to address that. So that was expected. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm just curious, 'cause I haven't driven by there and you, you raised the thought and that is, how did Leon Franklin and Cascades Park and all the other infrastructure we put in perform? Because, you know, everybody, Leon, we really didn't fix everything, but it's, did it operate properly?
We didn't receive any calls or any problems for those areas. It did function very well as designed to, very fortunate. We did execute our emergency plan with all our troops and it did serve us well to mitigate this. But Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, if we go back to the night of early morning hours of Friday, September two, the eye of Hurricane Hermine wrecked through Leon County and essentially interrupting hundred percent of the power to our water production wells, sewage pumping stations and our gas distribution facilities. Loss of power was entirely due to the massive damage to the storm caused by throw down trees and power lines. Just to put things in perspective, in my world, in the sewer system, we have hundred and seven lift stations located throughout the county. We lost power to each one of them. That never happened in the history of this water and sewer department. Those systems, they serve eighty-four thousand customers. In the city's water system, we have twenty-six wells. We lost power to each one of them that serves over seventy thousand customers. And at the gas side, we serve three counties. We are in Leon, Boca Lata and counties. We are in Leon, Boca Lata, and Gaddisland County, 30,000 customers. We would manage to do that very successfully. As indicated earlier, the loss of power for our facility, we also lost the SCADA system, our system control and data acquisition system. That is the system that monitored the entire three systems remotely from our control rooms. With a loss of power, we lost communication. Due to the massive power outage, our team switched immediately to manual operation mode. We initiated level one of our emergency recovery. We immediately realized this would be a large undertaking, and quickly deployed over 225 men and women in underground utility and public infrastructure. They work around the clock, manipulate the system manually. But let me stop here for a minute. That was the Labor Day weekend. And with the school closing Thursday and Friday turned to be five days weekend. I know personally, a lot of families, a lot of the underground utility managers, they had plans to be out of town. That's the last holiday in summer, to be out of town and enjoy their family's trip. A lot of them canceled those trips and their reservation. I'm very appreciative to each one of them. We, I didn't recall one incident when we called our employees. They were reluctant to come and work as much as needed to the last hours. Most of them, my managers, were working through the whole weekend. I was in touch with them all days and in the EOC. Those were engineers on the ground with the technicians, pump station mechanics, water well operators, treatment operators, IT folks. Our lab folks were there on the ground to test our water, to make sure that our water is safe. And the city, fortunately, we did not issue a single boil water notice through the entire storm. We also reached our septic haulers. We have three contracts. They were assisting us to hold some of the sewage, the overage. We didn't have very minimal overflows that occurred through the storm. We also reached through our mutual aid agreement to sister utilities. We received immediate response from six of them. Some of them deployed their resources within four hours. That tremendous response was key to the success of our continued operation of the system and ensuring that the incident of sewer overflows was minimized until power Our troops will continue to work hand in hand with the electric restoration as needed. We'll continue to work with community embitification for hauling trees. We still, we are committed to do this, Commission, in closing. I want to tell, assure you that this storm was a true test, how this government function as one unit aiming to the customer to restore the service to the unit. And I really appreciate it for all of your support, the City Manager's support. You see you at the EOC several times, and he was there most of the weekends. So also, I want to thank our vendors, our contractors, tremendous calls every day, offering help. Credit Union delivered food, and our treatment plant, along with Tallahassee Ford, and several, several supports from the entire community, even when we drove around town, citizens came out of their homes, watering waters, and get ready for our crews. So it's a testament that this is a community that cares. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Rob's going to give us an update on the electric grid and where it stands. Clearly, as we've indicated earlier, it's very fluid, it's dynamic where it worked today. As the Mayor indicated, power is being restored as we speak, and it has been for 24 hours a day now up to this point. So we've seen that progress overnight. Rob's going to give you kind of the facts and the stats, and clearly, we're going to get him back to work. He'll be followed by Chris Revel, who's going to give us an idea about the debris clearing and removal, which is an important part of this effort.
Mayor and Commissioners, obviously, we've had a busy, I guess, four days, losing track of time. Sort of give you a snapshot of where we are today to start with. We're down to about a little over 14,000 customers out of service. We've got all of our transmission system, substation system, the distribution circuits back in service. Some of the distribution circuits, as the manager noted, we have what we call segment. We have a little bit of damage in it, and we work around and backfeed. So we're now moving into what we call the sub-circuit level of restoration, where we're getting down to the smaller groupings of You know, we started these prep activities before the storm hit. We have an emergency storm response plan that we refresh every year before the storm. As we saw the storm heading our way, we started activating pieces of that. In fact, before the storm hit on that Thursday, we had already contacted, I think it was five, of our sister utilities to have them ready to roll Friday morning. We couldn't have used them first thing Friday morning after the storm, because we had to figure out what damage we had. But we targeted having those mutual aid crews coming in by lunchtime. The first ones coming in by lunchtime on Friday. We're now up to nine different utilities from the state and Georgia and Louisiana here that, to help us continue to restore the system. And we've been bringing those folks in as we've needed them. As was said earlier, we're at about the 90% point on power all the schools are in. 90% plus of the traffic lights in the city are on normal power. So we're actually working with DOT. Our team is to start removing the generators and moving them out. The, with where we are, we are, one of the things that put in perspective how much damage we had, the Eye moved right over Purdum. I was talking with the plant manager as the Eye was over Purdum that night, as they were out doing an assessment of the plant. Normally, on a Friday morning like this, we would have 200 megawatts of load. At 7:00 in the morning, we had 53 megawatts of load that Friday morning. And that was because of the amount of damage in our system. As some has said, we prioritize the restoration to do the transmission implants first, then the distribution. We look at the critical circuits for hospitals, fire stations, shelters, commercial areas, and then larger to smaller. And we've been working that plan throughout. We have hit our targets every day. We are where we felt we would be right now. Actually, I think we're a little ahead of where we thought we would be right now when we looked at the damage Friday morning. As we move into the next stage of the work, we're actually moving into the most dangerous time for our people in the restoration. It would have been very easy for us just to turn the power off to the whole system and bring a couple thousand people in from other utilities to say, go build the system. But we would have had to left the power off from a safety perspective till that was done. We've done all of this work as we have slowly been restoring the power to the system. While our focus is to get the customers back, our number one job is to do it without anyone getting hurt. And that's our employees, our mutual aid employees, and our customers. And so...
Rob, can you illustrate that point a little bit? Because I think it may be lost to most of us who are laymen in this, the safety concern and the difference between having a bunch of thousands or hundreds of people on a line working at one time. Just paint the picture for what does that mean? What really is at risk here? And why can you or cannot you accept that kind of support at one time?
That's a good question, Mayor. You know, we're operating the system at the distribution level that's 12,000 volts, where your home is 120 volts. And we have a lot of interconnectivity where we can backfeed and come at different directions with power to provide reliable service to our customers. So there's a lot of interaction between our control center and our field crews to make sure when they go to work on a piece of wire, that wire is de-energized and it is safe. Now, we always treat it like it's hot, just from a safety culture perspective, but there's a lot of interaction to do that. So when I bring mutual aid crews in to help us, I've got to have my people with them to help do that coordination. There's also got to be a situational awareness of where everybody else is working. We may have two different crews working on the same piece of wire, just in different locations, miles apart. And if we, if Crew A doesn't know what, where Crew B is, and we energize that line, somebody's going to get hurt. So that means we have to put people that know our system with those mutual aid crews, which means we have to start breaking our crews apart. There becomes a limit of how many people we can manage.
Is that the industry standard? Are we, is Tallahassee the only community that embeds people for safety reasons, or has this happened across the industry?
Everybody I know in our business does it that way, Commissioner.
That's, that's a very important point. So I think people are mistaking that the more trucks that come, the quicker the electricity's on. Now, it may be the more debris removal trucks that come, the quicker the debris is removed. But with electricity, it's something different. So i-if we had a dozen more trucks, 50 more trucks, would it be faster than what we have today, given the fact that we don't have people to put in each one of them?
We, we've reached the saturation point of how many mutual aid we can manage safely with the system energized. And the, we do have some more coming in today from JEA with a very specialized skill set, now that we're in the sub-circuit level, to help us. It was time to bring those in. But we're at the point where unless we just totally disband our crews, we're at the saturation point of running out of people to be out with our mutual aid crews and do it safely. And we have looked at that every day through this process, because our goal is to get the customers back as quick as we can. So, but we think we've had the right mix of folks throughout all of this, and we have been following the standard practices of our business.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Even though they may not be electrifying the lines, can't they clear the debris around the lines so guys can come back late, quickly, and quickly restore it? Because all the entangled wiring is, is straightened out.
Commissioner, I'd like to address that, because that crosses over into collaboration with our Public Works groups, including the county and the state. And Rob and his team were very, very instrumental. In fact, I think I've gotten really good feedback in terms of embedding electric personnel with those tree clearing crews. So you have a couple different disciplines in play. And so we were able to do that, get the wires entangled. That work's still underway to some degree, but a very modest amount. So that does require interplay between multiple areas, and that happened, not limited to city crews, but including county as well as FDOT efforts.
All right. Thank you.
One thing I'd like to add there is, if it was only our system that was injecting electricity to the lines, that would be one thing. But we have hundreds of customers that have portable generators out there. If they connect those generators improperly, if they don't just plug the appliances into the generator, if they connect the generator into their house wiring, that can come back onto our wires and energize the wires. So while from our side, I'm comfortable that the wires that are down are de-energized, I don't control the customers. We work with our customers to try to educate them on how to do generators. We do public safety announcements during times like this. We've worked with Allison to talk about that. But that's one of the risks that you've got out there.
Yeah. Thank you. And so what, what I wanted to reiterate, Rob, that you talked about, because, you know, there were malicious rumors going around that we were not welcoming help from, from other crews that had come in. Nothing could have been further from the truth, as our mayor has indicated. But what you've explained is the challenge of having all of those people come in. Not that we didn't need the help, but there are challenges associated with, with having those folk come in. They have a different way of work from what I heard at the briefing yesterday. Our model is a little different from the private, investor-owned companies as opposed to the municipals. And so it's important that, that our community understand those challenges and why we couldn't just have these folk come into the community without understanding what our system was like, our way of work, and having our staff embedded with them to make, to ensure their safety. The community needs to understand that. And so I wanted to reiterate that point.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. Mr. McGarrett, for some people who, and it's probably one of the most frustrating things that I think most citizens experience, where they see a neighbor's lights have been restored, or just a street over, the lights seem to be on. I know Curtis is at that, very sorry, position where, you know, just adjoining neighborhoods or streets appear to be on, but yours is not. Is there advice or guidance we should be giving? Are these folks to go out and maybe get electricians to come in and see whether or not it's on, and maybe there's a problem at their place? Is it that the grid system is such that folks may be on two different systems? What guidance can be given to folks in that kind of situation?
Well, we recognize that's a frustration for our customers when they see that. The way our system's designed, you have the circuits, then we have branches that feed off the circuits. When we're in doing the restoration work, we may find that a branch is, you and I may live in the same neighborhood. We may live across the street from each other and be on different branches. And your branch may be able to be restored, and there may be major damage to mine. We isolate it, we go on and get as many customers on, then we, at this stage, start coming back to doing that. If we were to do all of the repairs on all of the branches that we found, and if it's something simple, we go ahead and do it. But if it's a pole, pole broken, wire down, something that's going to take a crew hours to do, we'll go ahead and isolate it and move on to get more people on. Otherwise, we would slow down getting people on. Now, it could be an individual customer's problem, but more often than not, it's either the branch has not been energized, a fuse within the branch might be, or we may have a transformer that serves four or five homes that may have a problem. We're getting into those outages now. The, and working through those individual and small group outages now. But that's why you might see part of your neighborhood on, or part of your street on. I know in my neighborhood in Ox Bottom, we have two different circuits that serve that neighborhood. There's people across the street from each other that are on different circuits. So one side of the street will have power and the other side won't. And that's just because the way the wiring has come into the area.
Right. Two, two other quick questions. I'm sorry. The, I think people are resilient, and they really can manage information extremely well. It's the absence of information that can be the most frustrating, that folks go to bed at night, praying and hoping that I'm going to wake up to ACE and lights coming on the next morning. I'm wondering what we might be able to do to make more transparent, where are utility crews working, what neighborhoods they might be in at any particular point in time? Because if I know they're in my area, that's one thing. If I know they're not, and I'm still out, then I think I, you know, I can manage that expectation that I'm not going to wake up with ACE in the morning necessarily. What if, what's y'all's practice around that? What are you thinking about how it is we share information? And then the, yeah, I'll just stop there.
We've started sharing each morning where we're going to be that day with the Emergency Operations Center, with our morning status update. We list the different substations that we have crews working out. For example, today, we've got people in Myers Park, Bellevue Way, in some of the neighborhoods around TMH, Woodville, Roden Cove, Monroe I-10, St. Augustine, Huntington Woods, Pasco-Jake Gaither area, Spotswood, Caraway, Hawthorne area, Centerville Road, Buck Lake, and then the Micasuki Co-op.
Does the public have, get access to that? Is there a reason we wouldn't make it, I guess, available to them?
I don't know. We...
No, sir. There's no reason.
Okay, so maybe...
So it's becoming more and more refined as... So it's becoming more and more refined as you just heard, Rob, talking about very specific streets and areas. Up until this point, it's been large areas. It's been substation-oriented, kind of electrical infrastructure-oriented. I think we're at that point. You know, we're down to, we have a lot of our neighbors out, but it, relative to the system, it's smaller and we're dealing with streets and things that are more discernible in terms of the information. So Rob has shared that with you today, and I think that's what we'll be prepared to share.
I think that would be, I understand your point, that at different phases, you were working with much larger systems. It's hard to say, your street, this is that and the third. But at this point, I think it's imperative that we figure out a communications way to...
Absolutely. We can, where we are in the process now, we can start communicating that directly and on the broad level. So we are at that point in the process, as we just get into the neighborhoods yesterday and today, to disseminating that message.
And then the only last question I had, I had a brain freeze, was prioritization. How, there's been some conversation, the north side is powered and the south side isn't, or the west, and I know that not to be true because I keep hearing from folks on different sides of the city that still don't have power. But address how you all do prioritization.
Once we get the transmission system back and get into the distribution area, we start looking first at the circuits that have things like hospitals, fire stations, shelters. Once we get past those priority circuits, and those circuits, by the way, on Friday morning, we had Capitol Regional out, the airport out, TP Smith out, they were back. I don't know what time Friday, but they were back fairly early Friday. Then we start looking, and some of this is dependent on the amount of damage they have, but we start looking at the places that we can get the most customers back the quickest. And I think the manager referenced bigger to smaller. So the focus is bigger to smaller on the circuits. Then when we get to the sub-circuit, we're going to look for the bigger to smaller. Now, that's frustrating for a customer that maybe two or three customers may be out. But the goal is to get as many people back on as quick as we can.
Yeah.
Throughout the process. So we're looking at those priorities of, of where we've got community assets. Like, one of the places we focus on is Thomasville Road and I-10. And folks might say, why do you do that? Well, we do that because there's a Publix up there, there's a Home Depot, there's a Lowe's, there's restaurants, there's motels. Those are things that both support our operation when we bring mutual aid in, that we need hotels and restaurants, but it supports the community who are displaced because of an outage or an incident or a weather event like this. So that's the priority process that we work down, and that's a standard industry priority. When we've had the daily meetings with the, briefings with the governor, our peers have reported that that's the way they do it. You know, we're all following a, a fairly standard process in our business. I would like to end with one thing. We have a great team out there. They've been working 16-hour days. Most of them have not been home to their house. They've been here, and they're busting their tails. And I want to thank you for your support. I apologize.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Commissioner, I wanted...
My man, Rob. I wanted to address one particular issue, and that was the, sort of, the assistance and how that goes about. So in any particular storm, regardless where it is, whether it's Tallahassee, it could be Lakeland, it could be Miami, as soon as the storm comes in, there's certain agreements in place that you take advantage of. And on top of that, if the storm is large enough, every utility, being the brotherhood that they are, offers help. Generally, it's not done in a public setting. Generally, it's done very private. I call you, and I say, Commissioner Richardson, I have six crews I can make available, I got 10 crews, I got 100 crews, I got 1,000, whatever. The number is, I have them available for you, and you say, thank you very much, it gets jotted down, it gets put into the plan. So there is a plan of restoration, and there's obviously a saturation point. It is done every day in a very professional, very collegial way. So whether it was during Wilma or, or the hurricanes in Miami where it took months to repair, people reached out to FPNL and said, hey, we got help for you. It wasn't done again in a public setting, but it was done privately and, and in the spirit of being a collegial in the brotherhood. You put that into your plan, what's available to you and what your needs are, to be, again, the ultimate goal is to get people on, get your citizens back to normalcy. Every time you make a decision, you assess every day, sometimes twice a day. These guys get together and decide, hey, priorities are changing, needs are changing, and you make decisions. And you pull from those resources that you have available to you. Every time you do that, you have to redo your plan. So it makes sense to do it at stages, like today, like last night, the stage was, all our circuits are energized, we're going into the branches, we're going to hit these neighborhoods, we need more people. So now we don't need 13-man line crews to go work Pasco. We need a crew to go in there, get it set up, and then you need trouble crews, which is probably two men, three, men or women, two or three, go in there and do the fuses and do the breakers and do the kind of work that gets done to get people on. So you do that every day. Every time you reassess, you obviously slow down a little bit. So we added 77 people a couple of nights ago. Well, that costs us probably a couple of hours in that having to reassess, how do, how do we do these folks in a safe manner by embedding our crews within those crews, means we've got to break up our crews. Now, crews are obviously linemen who have a degree of, of knowledge and expertise, and then you have your apprentices, which help those guys do their work. If you break up that crew, now, sometimes you lose the work of an apprentice because they need that level of supervision. And certain people, certain companies, and I think there's some, actually, some public companies that do it this way, they do things on their own. They only work within their own crews, so our folks are there to basically communicate because they have the way they do things, no right way, no wrong way, everybody just does it a little bit different. Most of the people we have mutual aid agreements with are willing and able, because of their practices, to embed within our crews. So then our folks are also working with them. They're not just communicating, but they're up on the line, they're up on the pole, they're doing the work, and it becomes, it's just more manpower that you can actually utilize. So just, just the point that it's not unusual, we have so much offers for help, which is obviously heartwarming. So it's not just the ones that have been publicized, but there are a whole bunch of folks that we have that we know we can call on, including, you know, JEA, and I'll talk about that at the end, but just a general perspective that is not, we don't turn anybody away. We have a whole pile that we know we can call on, and we use those assets as we need them, so.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and Mr. Manager, those decisions are made at your level, if that's my understanding.
That's exactly correct.
And in your staff, you make those decisions as to the mutual aid agreements and who we will bring in at the appropriate time. That's not made by the commission.
No, sir.
Nor should it be.
No, sir. I, I would venture to guess that sometimes the commission disagrees with those decisions.
And, and then the, the other point is, we don't, we, we don't impose superfluous requirements on those other utilities that want to come in, like they're unionized or not unionized, they're Democrat or Republican, they're South or North. We, that, that is not even considered when we determine those kinds of mutual aid agreements.
No, sir. When we're on the receiving end like today, like, like we are this week, we take help where we absolutely need it. When we are on the offering help, I think, personally, I think it would be totally disrespectful and unprofessional to, to, to publicize that and accuse someone else of refusing our help when we've made it hundreds of times. We haven't always been taken on. Sometimes we've been on the road and got turned back. So I think it's important to note that there should be a level of professionalism and respect when someone else is in trouble and you're trying to do everything you, you can to get your citizens back on, to add fuel to the fire. I just think that's disrespectful and unprofessional.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a couple of general comments and then, because I, I think this meeting can continue to go on and on, and I'm not sure that's the best thing. First of all, to, to the police chief and the fire chief, thank you very much for your presentation. If we ever had any doubt that staffing would assist us on keeping the crime rate low, we now have the answer to that. Because when you had that many officers on the street, anybody that stepped out of line went to jail. So that, that was a good thing. Our call center folks, if they are getting a, you know, the negativity that I've gotten, I can imagine they're getting by a million. Because one thing I know for sure, people say that Henry Flagler was the father of Florida. No one would live here if it were not for Dr. John Gory, who created air conditioning in Appalachia Cola in 1851. Because after 48 hours of no air conditioning, people started cussing everybody out. So those poor folks on the call center that are just taking those calls in have gone through an awful lot. The EOC staff, yesterday, I spent some time there and just, you know, you got people living around the clock in the EOC, they're doing a fantastic job. All of our folks on the street and each one of our departments are working and away from their homes. So, all right, so do we do an after-action report? Certainly, we do an after-action report. And I, you know, we look at storm hardening, we're going to look at our response times, we're going to look at our call system, we're going to look at our communication plan and see how we could have done things better. But we're not in after-action, we're in in-action. Okay? So we dispel some, some myths today, which was good, that more trucks aren't necessarily better. The, the union thing is ridiculous. If anyone has any question, call JB Clark, President of the Florida Electrical Workers' Association. Florida Power and Light and all your private investor-owned utilities are 100% unionized, from stem to stern. City of Tallahassee Electric is not unionized. So the, the rumor that we're only requiring unionized workers to come in here is the exact opposite. So, you know, we dispel some different, different rumors. But the bottom line is, we still have 14,000 people without power. Let's go get them power.
That's right.
Let the people who don't have to do this work snipe, and they'll be sniping. So what? Let's go get those 14,000 people power. When they all got their power done, then we'll come back, we'll have an after-action report, we'll figure out whatever we can do better. But I can promise you this. I'm a lawyer and a politician. Rob McGarrett runs an electric system. He's done it his entire life. He is a, a professional that is recognized by his peers as being outstanding in his industry. Barry Moline's here, and he will tell you that. We have lots and lots of people like that. I'm not going to second-guess them. I think they're doing a good job. There'll be a time for after-action. It's not now. I support them. Let's go get 14,000 people power back.
Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, just a few words myself. I was at the EOC briefing meeting yesterday and, at that time, had skin in the game. I don't have skin in the game anymore, y'all. I got my power back last night, which was a good thing. We went five days without power, and of course, as I mentioned yesterday, my wife had just had surgery prior to the hurricane coming through, so she had to be displaced once my sister-in-law got power. And so she's there with her now, and hopefully we'll get her back home today, and she won't have to deal with that. But I, I, you know, I, I was here during Kate and saw what we went through then, and certainly we haven't experienced anything like that since, until now. But what this event has done for me and my family is certainly reaffirm why we have chosen to make Tallahassee our home. I have seen in this city over these last few days, a community come together like I never have before. Neighbors helping neighbors, I mean, the day after the storm with, you know, wires down and trees down, neighbors were out on the street helping each other get their houses cleaned up, their yards cleaned up, to the degree, to the extent, rather, that they could without putting their safety in peril. And, and it was just amazing. And then the staff that we have here at the city, and I'm going to say this, these individuals that we have sitting in front of us are worth every nickel that we pay them for the job that they do. And I don't have a problem with that, and I'll state it here and anywhere else I need to state it. The job that they have done over these last few days is second to none that I could imagine in the state of Florida, probably in this nation. And our community should be proud of that, and the staff that we've put together and the work that they have done. When you, right around this community and you look at the extent of the damage to our infrastructure, as has been stated here, 120-year-old system, it, it's amazing that we're back to where we are already. And that's a testament to not only this leadership team, but those, those hard-working men and women who are out there on the street now, as has been stated, they haven't been home in days. Their families are without power in a lot of instances. But yet, they're, they're showing up for work every day, they're not grumbling, they're not complaining, they're doing what is being required of them to get their neighbors back to some sense of normalcy after this horrendous event that none of us could have anticipated or controlled, certainly. And so, you know, it makes me proud to be a part of this community, to be a part of the leadership team, and to have the kind of staff that we have and the work that we've done. You know, there, it's unfortunate, you know, that, that, you know, we had a situation where malicious rumors were flying. I think we've dispelled those this morning. There was no attempt to turn away assistance. We want to thank, I see Kim has left, we certainly want to thank the governor's office for the assistance that they were able to provide. There was some miscommunication and misinformation that came out of that situation early on, but we got that rectified because we wanted to make it clear that for all of us, our goal was to have every single one of our neighbors back up, their power back up as quickly as possible. That was all of our goal. None of us were at odds as to that goal, and all of us were working towards that end in, in every way that we could. I want to personally thank all of the not-for-profit agencies, the volunteers, because without them, we could not have been successful providing water, those that provided shelter and comfort stations, the churches, faith-based organizations. This community just came together like the All-America City that we know that she is. And I'm just so proud to be a part of this city and the leadership team of this government. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for all that you do.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, after that, I have only some minor details I'd like to clear up. First of all, one of the things that, and I spoke to Allison about this yesterday, one of the things that I'd like for us to put in play right away is our communication on our recording as people call in, because they really need to hear these updates. And if you all could possibly put a recording on there citywide so that when people call, they'll hear about where the crews are working, you know, what, what people can expect, or if something storm-related that will help the people who are calling, those are the people that are still in need, to give them some guidance. The other thing is WCO T. I think that people are going to need to know how to get help from FEMA when FEMA gets in process. I think they're going to need to know what Rob said about the folks with generators and the folks with solar, that would also apply to the folks with solar, about the cross-contamination of the electric when people are working on the wires. That's just, so, information about how that electricity flows and how it affects when it's interrupted and somebody's trying to work on the wires, that kind of thing. And the consumer fraud was mentioned, that's another thing that we can be, begin today to develop. We don't have to have real sophisticated, I mean, heck, you could go to the EOC and just do some filming and do some live streaming, let people see that everybody's working. Go out and, and guess, visit some of these sites where people are talking about. And, and so if you can start to focus the programming the rest of this week on helping people to know what to do after the storm and how to get help, that would be very important. Finally, I'd like to ask you to give us an update on a couple of areas that have continually, I'm continually, continually getting, getting calls on. My understa- one is... I'm continually, continually getting calls on. My underst, one is Micasukee, and all the way out there, Mid-Yett, all the way out Micasukee, all the way out Meridian. I was interested that, I just haven't heard anybody calling me really so much about Centerville, meaning that the lines are undergrounded on Centerville. So, I guess that tells us something about the canopy roads and undergrounding the wires. But, if you could give us some updates, I heard you mention Roden Cove. Apparently, there is a quagmire issue out there where Meridian and Roden Cove come together that, according to the pictures I saw, looked pretty unsafe. So, and some signage out there to tell people, I had a, while we were sitting here, somebody texted in, "You've got to slow people down on Meridian because they're coming down the hill into that area quickly, and they're going to run right into this mess, and if not, people working on the mess." And so, you need to maybe think about that over there. What is going on in Midtown? I mean, why, there's so many people in the center of town, and mostly around Meridian, out Meridian, I'd say from Sixth out past Faith Presbyterian and that whole area, but even farther out than that. But, that's in kind of the center of town. So, what is the problem over there? A lot of businesses are in there.
Commissioner, I can speak to that. So, that's one of our more established, mature areas of town. Probably an understatement.
Old.
People that live there, too.
Yeah. And clearly, we know it's a treasure of our city, but it has a lot of trees, and we know we probably had the most damage from trees in that area. So, the restoration actually is occurring. I'm getting updates as we speak of homes that have been established, or reestablished electricity to, as well as businesses. But, when it happens, it's not that many. So, it literally is a battle of street by street, home by home. You're going to see that for the next few days. It will not be an area that we bring on in full force, because you can't. The repairs are very, very localized. That's happening now. There's a couple of other areas like that, that, and there's a strong corollary to the amount of trees and the age of those trees. So, that work literally is happening, you know, street by street, home by home. So, that's what you see there. As it relates to other areas like Roden Cove, out that area, you know there was quite a bit of damage and reconstructions that's necessary. I'm hopeful, when that's done, then that brings on the subdivisions that follow kind of to the north of there. And that's the way that effort will go today.
Alright, and then my final question.
Micasukee, thank you for bringing that one up. I'm very optimistic that it'll be completed today. We were expecting it yesterday. The additional resources we got from Gulf Power, we assigned them that segment. It was a way we could do it in a safe manner, where they started in and around the roundabout, just outside the circle, and we just basically said, "Hey, take this segment, it's your segment, it's de-energized, and work out." They began that work yesterday. We were expecting it to be completed. I don't think it was completed last night, and will be completed in this morning. Some of it was brought on, we had some good success. Some much-needed power was brought on in that area. But, there's subdivisions, as you know, out east Micasukee. Once we get that main lined up and some of the branch circuit repaired, done, we'll bring those back on, and I'm expecting it this morning. We were hoping last night, but that's kind of been the way this effort's going.
Last thing is about debris removal. I think you said that, I know, I want you all to get back to work, frankly, but if you would enlighten everybody about what the process is with that.
Yes, ma'am. I can be very brief on that. So, of course, the first step was what's referred to as cut and toss. Get it out of the road, make sure the roads are passable, that you can get the electric lines restored, and bring your community back to normal. So, that's been done. We're transitioning into debris removal, and we've got numerous teams working in collaboration with contractors doing that. We actually started two days ago picking up debris. It was actually in concert with some of the cut and toss, as crews were available to do that. So, in Myers Park, Indian Head Acres, debris removal already began, and I was told almost immediately upon that debris removal, the neighbors were bringing more stuff to the curb. We're going to see that over the couple of weeks, because there's debris in homes, or in the yards of homes and things like that, and so that'll be expected, and we're planning for that. We are moving into the stage of emergency-level debris removal. We'll coordinate with the county to make sure that's FEMA reimbursable. There is a process in that, and so you'll see massive efforts related to debris removal. I don't have an estimate, an estimate of time of how long that will take. It will take longer than I would like it to take, I can tell you that. But, there is an effort led by Reginald O'Fonny and Chris Revel to do it, and we have numerous crews and partners that we'll be working with to do that.
Alright, thank you.
Just dovetailing on that. So, regular trash pickup, we had the holiday, folks are confused with the storm, how that, it usually goes that if your day is Monday, expect Tuesday. What should people be doing now?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Solid Waste Service resumed normal pickup on Saturday. So, that work that we would have done on Friday didn't happen on Saturday, if you can believe that. It was amazing. And then today, Tuesday, it will be Monday's pickup because of the holiday, and it will continue on. So, we shift from Monday through Friday to a Tuesday through Saturday. That's happening right now as we speak. And they're out there doing it. That includes some bulk waste and trash, and the guys are working really well together to make sure we clean up the city and move forward.
Just to address your point about Midtown, something really dramatic, because I live in Midtown, and I was on my front porch looking at the storm at 1:00 in the morning, by 1:15, and it started, must have been around Winthrop, and it came Winthrop, over to Seventh, over to Sixth, Lafayette Park, Whataburger, and if you go out there, the number of trees and downlines, all pointing in the same direction southwest. Something clearly happened at that moment, because it was, and you could, when I was out there, you could actually see the transformers and equipment popping, and the lights just heading from one direction to the other. Those of you that are out there, and many of you are part of this, can't see, but there are a whole lot of tired eyes here. I mean, you guys have either been working hard, or you had a heck of a party last night.
They haven't been home for shit.
Who knows? I don't think it's from watching the game. The commitment is unquestionably some of the most hard-working and, and I will tell you, level of expertise of folks that I've ever seen in my life. You guys have been exceptional, and women, excuse me. Having been, as Commissioner Richardson was here during Kate, this is so different. One of the things that I don't think people realize is how much larger we are. There wasn't a Southwood 30 years ago. There wasn't Kalaran Lakes and all, none of that existed. We were a fairly small city. Tharp Street was an awful road. It was a two-lane road, and I remember the snap poles probably went for a mile. Totally different situation.
So was Capital Circle.
Capital Circle was a two-lane road. Thomasville Road was a two, this is a completely different city than it was. We're 100 square miles, we're, I think, the seventh-largest geographic city in the state of Florida. That's a lot of land, in addition to all the areas in the county that we cover. That's a lot to cover in a very short period of time. So, to be at 90% in just over four days is really quite good. But, as Commissioner Maddox said, and as the mayor said, we still have 14,000 people, and to them, none of that matters, and I get that, as all of us are getting their emails.
Yeah.
And their tweets, and everything else. Which is the other thing. 30 years ago during Kate, there weren't even cell phones. You know, you turned on the 6:00 news if you could get TV in one of your neighbor's houses, or mainly you were listening to radio. And that's how you got your news, and that's about all there was. Well, of course, now we know there are greater opportunities to not only get information, but also put it out. And we have a lot of angry people out there, because we're not hearing from the happy people, because they're happy. So, as Commissioner Maddox said, we need to fix those 14,000 as quickly as possible. The final thing is, for me, as a Florida Gator, is something special to say, and that is, last night, the Seminoles were down and out the first half, and this city took a lot of heat for a couple of days, for our lack of response. Well, they're just wrong. And the Seminoles came back last night, and boy, did they show this country what a great football team they are, and how resilient they are. And I will tell you, this city, we're exactly the same. So, if you're out there and you're using this situation for political gain, stop it, because people come before politics.
Yes.
This man, his heart, his soul, his being, is so caught up in this city, that it pains me to see sometimes the attacks he takes. And this city manager and everybody else, we're doing great, we're strong. And by the time people come into this town for the football game this weekend, they're going to look around and go, "They had a what here?" And so, thank you to all of you. You've done a great job.
Yeah.
One other thing I wanted to mention is, and I don't want this to be lost on any of us, through all of this, there was not one fatality
That's right.
in our community.
Major injury.
That was a blessing.
It is.
And we certainly should not take that for granted, because we're all still here. After a major event like that in this community, we didn't suffer one fatality directly associated with the storm. And I don't want that to be lost on any of us, so.
Commissioner, I wanted to thank you, Commissioner. I wanted to, you know, sort of in the spirit of the whole miraculous nature of not one life lost, my pastor gave a sermon on Sunday morning, and basically the gist of it was, "In all things, give thanks." And one of the things that, you know, he pointed out was, and we all saw this, you saw the horrific images of trees literally going through people's homes.
Yes.
Big trees. You couldn't see the root of it or the head of it, because that's how big some of these trees were. I think there was one instance where a tree went through and cut a man's face. His face was all stitched up, but just an inch over, could have been his life. And time after time, instances, live wires down, unbelievable, I mean, destruction. And through all of that, to emerge from that without a single loss of life, I mean, I can't give, I can't do anything but give thanks.
Yes.
But I think the miraculous nature of that is just incredible. Trees that should have gone this way into a house went that way. And onto our power lines that disrupted people's ability to get their power. But, there is something incredibly miraculous in that, and I did want to ask, on the human services level, and I know, we don't want to extend y'all here, much, y'all ought to be out, and we will take public comment. But, Sharon Tyler, if you could just come forward here, who has coordinated our shelter resp, I mean, these are folks who were down and out in need. They opened up three shelters, they then sized down, they dealt with the most medically needy, so on and so forth. And as she comes, I also want to thank, I see them in the audience, Pastor Greg James, Teresa Berger, you all opened up Life Church, served food. The superintendent bused people in so that they could eat there. There were other faith community houses that did the same thing. Lisa Brown, Dr. Cindy, you all coordinated very quickly over Facebook. A couple hundred people showed up to put together kits, and take those and deliver those to line workers, both our homegrown ones and also those who came into our community to visit. The Salvation Army set up hot meals, along with the Red Cross, went into the neighborhoods most detrimented by this, and gave people food. Yesterday, Cynthia, you organized, along with Wayne and others, because we couldn't get the ice that we wanted, you sent folks to find ice, got that into here. And yesterday, we walked through some of the neighborhoods that were detrimented, literally handing out ice and water, and people were so appreciative. They didn't have lights, they didn't have to take a warm shower, they were just thankful. They were thankful for the thought. And so, y'all have been, y'all have been incredible on the human services level response, which we cannot forget, that there is great suffering. Sharon, you and I were together yesterday at a mobile home park, 200 people in this mobile home park. And this young boy who had just gotten his hot meal, you know, mentioned that it was still so hot. And one of the Red Cross staff said, well, you know, they had a little bottle of water, they said, "Take the bottle and pour it on your head, it'll cool you off." And the little boy said, "I can't waste water."
Oh.
And so, on top of the abject poverty that already existed there, the fact that this man had the consciousness, this young boy had the consciousness to say, "I cannot waste water, but I'm thankful for the food," is amazing. It's amazing. I'm so full. I'm so full.
Well, and you could have gone all day without telling that story, because I was going to be fine up here and not cry. But, it was incredibly heartwarming. And to y'all that may not know, we've got some great pictures. Our mayor got out there, and he was, he was serving food right along with us, and so we appreciate that, as were some of our TPD folks. So, they were there, and the neighborhood there were thrilled to have them. We'll be back there today. We're doing feeding routes throughout the city. We've got six of our emergency response vehicles, so we're doing feeding routes back at the mobile home place. We're out on Micasukee as well, at Magnolia Terrace, we're doing feeding routes. Our shelter has transitioned from Florida High as, while we're here, and it's opening over at Bethel AMN Church this morning. And so, we'll continue that as long as there's a need. The, at the height of the storm, we had 33 shelters open across, evacuation shelters across our Panhandle in preparation for it. We are still manning the comfort station there at the, comfort cooling, whatever we would like to call it, there at the public library. And we'll do that throughout today, and then assess the need to see how it continues to go. We've got disaster damage assessment teams throughout Leon County, as well as our other eight county areas, checking to see what the scale and scope of this disaster is. I mean, obviously, we know more here in Tallahassee what it is, but checking all around in the rural areas as well. And once that's determined, that dictates how our response continues. We have mental health volunteers on the ground. We have over 250 volunteers on this particular disaster relief operation, along with the 3,000 that are still on the ground over in Louisiana. So, it's a busy, busy time for us. But, our board members pitched in, some of our commissioners across the area, and our county commissioners, I know Nancy was out of town this weekend, but actually worked the cooling station as well. So, that was important. We've got our Southern Baptist friends have a relief kitchen, and they're feeding our shelters. Y'all talked about partnerships. We actually, at the beginning, before the Southern Baptist folks could get here and set up the kitchen, our shelters here in Leon County were supported by the Creek Indian Nation Reservation that's in Gretna, that I had no clue even existed. So, yes, they came over and actually helped us feed the folks that were in the shelter. We've got bulk distribution that we're doing, cleanup kits and comfort kits that we're giving out to help people clean up and recover again from the storm.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, we're going to meet again in a week
Yes.
and one day. Clearly, you've been struck with some budgetary issues, so maybe perhaps in our final, second to the last final public hearing on our budget, we could have some idea of what this does to our budget and how we may need to assist some folks that have clearly expended some funds that they didn't plan to.
Thanks.
And I also hope in the, and obviously, once you procure the FEMA preparation, folks, that there's a local threshold of spending that we have to meet. We will far, we will far exceed that. But, I do hope that the expenses incurred in this process by the Red Cross are also taken into consideration. And I know that they don't get direct government funding. They are, basically exist off of the charitable contributions of good-hearted people. But, we absolutely need to keep that in mind as we, as we consider how we make them whole from the work that they have done, they and others have done in this, in this process. Thank you very much for that update.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your work you're doing. We appreciate it.
Indeed. Mr. Manager, I would love for you to be able to dismiss any critical staff that you need to. We will, we will remain and take public input from folks. And Treasurer Clerk, I believe you may have what that looks like.
Right now, Mayor, I have about a half dozen. If anyone else wants to fill out a speaker form, those are on the table in the back, and they can just walk up and hand it to me. Our first speaker is Lisa Brown, and as she comes forward, I believe the microphone behind Commissioner Miller should work and be the one we use. Speakers will have three minutes, and I'll keep the time here on my phone and let you know when your three minutes have expired. So, if a speaker will give name and address, we will appreciate it.
For any of you that haven't seen it yet. Okay, so I give my name and address first?
Right.
Okay. Lisa Brown, 3273 Thoreau Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. Hi, my name is Lisa Brown, and I'm the President and CEO of Tallahassee Leon Federal Credit Union. While our credit union serves members in the community for Gadsden, Jefferson, McCullough, and Leon County, we were originally chartered to serve city and county employees. What we've been going through over this last week is especially near and dear to our hearts, because it's required so much from so many of our members. I'm here today to share our experience from this last weekend, share benefits that the credit union will be providing to city and county employees, and propose an event. In the midst of bringing three locations up and fully operational, mostly working with no AC, we decided to go out and find linemen and first responders to thank. Tallahassee Ford donated vehicles, and we began driving all over town. We stopped at the CDA, EMS, TFD, TPD, everywhere we could find. I had a discussion with Dr. Stacy Chambers with Florida State University Schools, Florida High, for those of you that are from Tallahassee, who called me because she wanted to help. In just a few hours, there were no parking spots left. In just a few hours, there were no parking spots left at my office. Parents, teachers, and students of Florida High were out in full force. Folks from Tallahassee Ford were helping deliver with two donated vehicles. Residents from Southwood that found out through the Southwood Watch page showed up, as did the members of Emerged Church. In 30 minutes, these folks collected thousands of snacks and drinks. Children made thank you cards. We went in teams, and we delivered supplies and hugs to city and county offices and men in the field. I wanted you to be aware of this. I want to publicly thank all that jumped in and said, "We're here to help." I'm hoping that we're going to be able to do this again tomorrow. Just need a little bit more energy. Next, I want you to know that Tallahassee Leon Federal Credit Union is going to be offering quick emergency loans to any city and county employees and allowing our members to skip payments, loan payments, if they're experiencing any financial hardship. We will be sharing this information to the various city and county HR departments so that they may disseminate to their staff. We don't want any of our members to feel financial stress at this time, those city and county employees. Finally, I would like to propose that Saturday, September 24th, be designated as No Labor Day and that we are allowed a do-over. We need to set up in a park, and utility employees and first responders need to be treated for the day. We need to engage the members of our community. I can promise you, they're ready to help. They want to bring food. They want to say thank you. And to provide fun, like music, food, and family activities, our hometown heroes should be given a badge that will allow them to eat and participate for free. And by wearing it, allow citizens to recognize them, walk up and thank them personally. The credit union is happy to help facilitate that effort. And I don't think I brought enough thank you cards, but the kids from Florida High wanted to make sure that you guys had these this morning and all through the weekend. Thank you so much for all that you guys are doing. Thank you to those hard-working folks. Please pass along our gratitude.
Thank you, Cynthia.
The next speaker is Cara Leeds, followed by Gus Corbella.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. It's been a long time since I've been in front of a group of people. I just want to say thank you to all the people on the ground who have been tirelessly working. And I just wanted to come and say, if there is a way to increase the communication to the citizens, we're one of the few without power left. And while we're very fortunate, it is very frustrating. They spoke today about Midtown being heavily damaged. That would have been helpful to know. We probably would have figured out we were going to be on the tail end. And so, if there's a way to get that information out of, these are the areas that are going to be the last that we're going to get to because it's going to be street by street because of the tree damage. The most helpful information we've gotten was an email from Planet Fitness that said, "We're on the grid for North Meridian, and it's heavily damaged, and we live close behind them, and we're on the same grid." And so, we thought, oh, this is probably going to be a while. And that email didn't come until yesterday. So, driving by our road every day with transformers on the ground is pretty disheartening. But we understand, and we're rational. And so, if you guys can give us the information, then we can temper our expectations and probably not call as much, not continue to report our outage, and let you guys do your work more efficiently. And I think we've done extraordinary things over the past few days. It would just have been helpful to know that we were in those small few that five days out, we're going to be, you know, hot and humid and living in the dark. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Please.
Thank you, Ms. Leeds. It's no bother to call. It's no bother to contact us. Feel free to contact us. You're not slowing us down. Let us know. We want to stay in touch.
Next is Gus Corbella, and then Greg James.
Good morning. Mayor Gillum, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Gus Corbella, and I've been a resident of Tallahassee for the past 22 years, half my life. As of this morning, when I left my home, my power has been out for 105 hours and counting. My home is in Benton Hills. I didn't hear that listed today. I hope it'll be there soon. I am not a neophyte. I've spent my entire professional career working on public service and with governments at all levels. So, I know, I know, that situations like the ones my neighbors and I find ourselves in are not resolved readily. I know that. However, out of the darkness that we've sat in these past five days, a light has been shown on a laundry list of problems where we feel the city has failed us. I'm not here to lay blame, and I take exception when somebody dares question their government to be called malicious. I take exception to that, sir. But I have a number of questions that my neighbors and I expect that you will answer in the days and weeks ahead. First and foremost, let me make very clear that we are so grateful to every utility worker that's out there that's been working tirelessly to restore our power. Your dedication to your profession is commendable, as are all the law enforcement and professionals who have worked to keep order and safety in our city. And I hope you'll express that to all of them on our behalf. Beyond them, it's been heartwarming to see neighbors looking after neighbors, cleaning debris, and delivering food and water and ice. That sense of community is why my wife, my son, and I call Tallahassee home. We are thankful no life was lost during the storm. But for a moment, let's imagine if the storm had been a category two or worse, if our neighbors had been severely injured or killed, if folks had been trapped in their homes with no way for them to get out or call or get help, if there had been no way for emergency vehicles to access them because of debris on the roads. That could have been Thursday night. Thank God it wasn't. Thank God we were spared. But what the good Lord can't control is where you all come in. In this all-American city, the capital of the third-largest state in the Union, home to the number-one public utility in America, my neighbors and I deserve answers to the following questions. And I want to try to emphasize that I have tried to ask this as respectfully as I can in every way that I have asked. And, Mr. Mayor, I believe my letter to you ended respectfully. That was my sign-off. Your mom and my mom raised us right. That's how we deal with each other is respectfully. When private utilities offered to help our city by sending trucks, crews, and expertise, why were they turned away? Question one. And I know we've talked about that this morning. I know we've talked about that this morning. Number two, is our city bound by a mutual aid system as members of the Florida Municipal Electric Association? Is this why we relied on eight other small-city member utilities outside of Gulf Power rather than on other companies who have national expertise in restoring power to millions of people after much larger storms in much faster amounts of time? Question three, why was first response not first focused on the elderly and the disabled? Why on day four did it take activism on social media to have their cries for help acknowledged much less answered? Question four, why were utility crews not staged around the city at those locations and other vulnerable locations before the storm with our partners at the ready? Question five, why did the Department of Transportation have to install generators at traffic signals? Is our traffic infrastructure at risk again for future storms? Question six, if the mayor does not control city utility staff, who does? Why are they not answering questions to the public? But lastly, most importantly, what can we do proactively and not reactively to make sure this never happens again? These are just a few questions. You know, I've often joked that power in my neighborhood will go out if a squirrel passed gas. Over the last 20 years, we've grown accustomed to power going out for hours after the smallest of thunderstorms. Heck, sometimes it even goes out in a sunny day. But this is not funny anymore, and this is not about power being out anymore. My friends and neighbors deserve answers, not necessarily today, but very soon, and we expect leadership and accountability from our leaders. Tip O'Neill used to say that all politics is local, and boy, he wasn't kidding. And neither are we. We expect the best from you, and I know that people have worked really hard. But it's been 105 hours after sustained winds of 40 miles an hour. What if they've been 120? Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We could just, I'm sorry to interrupt the speakers, but
Please.
Mr. Corbella knows me, and I'm a blunt person, so I'm going to give you answers to your questions real quick, so you don't have to wait on them. Number one, we answer the private utilities question. It makes no difference whether it's a private or a public utility. If we have additional trucks and we don't have people to put with them, it doesn't do us any good. So, we answer that, number one. Number two, we're not bound by any mutual aid agreement with the Florida Municipal Electric Authority or Association to the point where we can't take assistance from anyone. I think we took the assistance that was closest to us, and the electric expertise is not one where one utility has much more than another. Okay? So, you have the same level of knowledge from Gulf Power that you would have at Florida Power and Light. There's no difference. They just have farther to come, maybe. Now, the point we are now, where we have individual streets with lots of downed lines, we need to bring in what are called trouble trucks that we're talking about doing right now with JEA, that they have a specific expertise that can help us. But we weren't bound by any kind of agreement that would keep us from doing that.
And Mr. Maddox, Jacksonville's a lot closer than Thomasville or Fayetteville, Louisiana, or all these places. There's others that had staged crews sitting outside of Tallahassee, Lake City, Stark, other places, waiting and ready to come in.
Yeah, let me, if you would, I'll discuss your question.
Yes, sir.
To answer that, again, we don't, the requirement isn't, I guess the best analogy is, if you were in a hostage situation with your house, we could send the SWAT team or the tac team, which would be highly-trained 30 people, to come and help get you out of your house. Or we could send 1,000 police officers. 1,000 police officers aren't going to help you get out of your house any quicker than the 30. So, that's what we're trying to say is, there wasn't a need for extra trucks. If it was, it has not been demonstrated to me. And we had Mr. McGarrett here. We asked him the question today. If somebody can make that case after today, I'll be glad to sit down and listen to it. But it hadn't been made to me today. Number three, elderly and disabled, we, of course, targeted our hospital grids. You heard that first. We have, and from there, places like Westminster Oaks and others, and we got more information as time came on. Also, a lot of those places had generators, and we knew when the folks that had generators and had a backup power supply. Something that we can do better at, I believe, as we move forward, is targeting individual smaller groups of elderly and disabled, which we don't know where they are today. So, we couldn't give them special help without identifying where they are, and I think we can do better there. Generators at intersections, I don't know the answer to that as to whether we need to provide that. Is the mayor in charge of the electric department? No. Why is the mayor not in charge of the electric department? Because of a charter. Our city charter says that we are council mayor, formal government. You have an elected leadership mayor. That was changed in 1996. The first elected mayor was in 1997. It did not give any powers to the mayor outside of what the city commission gives the powers to the mayor. The city manager runs the electric system and any other departments outside of the city attorney, the auditor, and the treasurer clerk. If we want to change that, we change it by charter, vote by the people. What can we do proactively? That's the best part of what you brought up, and I think that's what we'll do in the coming days and weeks. This is the bottom line. To underground our utilities, which we've got nearly 100 years above ground, we have required for a very long time now underground utilities and any new development. To go back and retrofit is in the billions of dollars. To do that, we would have to raise everyone's electric rates by a great deal over a long period of time in order to do that. That's number one solution. Number two solution is we cut down all our trees, which are the main culprits of why you have outages in Benton. So, that's number two solution, that we cut down all our trees. Neither one of those two are reasonable. Number three is that every 30 years when we have a storm of this magnitude, we do everything we can to get everybody back on as quick as we can. So, that's where we are today. We've obviously made a lot of progress, and you heard that today, between the 65% up in four days with Hurricane Kate and the 90% up in four days from Hurricane Hermine. Can we improve on that? I'm sure we can, and that's what the after-action will be about. But those are the options that are given to us. I didn't want you to leave without getting answers.
I appreciate that, and I hope you'll count me in on any way that I can help as a taxpayer and citizen. I'm happy to do whatever it takes to bring attention to these matters, to bring solutions to these matters.
And I know that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
Yeah, I think everything you said has relevance, and I don't think any one of us want to diminish that. And I think everything you said, I mean, look at our staff, we're all going to reconsider every single thing that we've done. Because clearly, there are things that we've learned in this process. And I don't think there's anybody at this table that's going to walk away saying, "Nope, we did everything perfect," because that's just not the case. You can always learn. But the fact is, was it 10 years since the state's been hit? Is it 10 years?
Eleven.
Eleven years. But I know that the Northeast has had, you know, they got our storms for a couple of years. And I'm sure a lot of people up there wondered, "Why are those houses not on pilings?" And they all got flooded out, and everybody knew it was going to happen, and why did they do that? Because we really don't think these are going to happen that often. We just don't. Commissioner Maddox is right. The amount of money that it would take for us to do this is, if we started throwing those numbers out, everybody would be like, "Well, maybe not." But there are times to evaluate. It's not today, probably, because we have a lot of other things to do, mainly they do. The biggest thing that I've heard, and this is no fault whatsoever of Communications Department, because you've done a great job as our staff, but clearly, there is a need to get more information out there. Up to this point, I'm not sure we could do it because we were trying to deal with things that were just falling on us. Midtown, for example, my block, well, actually, my whole area got power, I think it was Saturday, and a transformer blew that night. And right across the street, they were out until last night at midnight. You can't help that. But now, we're in a position to put out what the city manager said. These 30 or 40 places are getting help today. We need to do that so people can get a feel of where they are. I don't know if we know where we're going to be tomorrow because it depends on how things are today, but we have other opportunities. We're going to learn from everything you suggested. All of us have been approached either through email or phone calls or whatever about being out. And generally speaking, once people get their power back, they kind of feel a lot better. But I've said to all of them, "When this is over, we need to get all you folks together and listen because you were out a lot longer than I was."
Still am.
And I haven't had to go through what you've had to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, I want to learn, and I think all of us do, and we'll go through that process, not today, but soon.
And Commissioner, if I could just add, as the mayor mentioned, we're dealing with a 120-year-old system. What can we do to improve it? What can we do to make sure that if it's trees that are knocking out transmission lines, the veins go into the arteries? As I said, this was a 40 mile-per-hour, 60 mile-per-hour gust storm. What if it had been worse?
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we are so fortunate. So, that's what I ask you to keep in the back of your mind.
I think all of us are, and you'll be a part, hopefully, of that
Thank you.
problem solving later.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Greg James. And I'll ask speakers, if they would, to give their name and address. We appreciate that. And he'll be followed by Katie, for whom I don't have a last name.
Name Gregory James. Address is 1134 Abraham Street, Tallahassee, Florida. First of all, let me say that being a pastor and a man of faith, natural disasters, I think the only person I read about that was able to really speak and immediately the storm, the waves, and the water calm was Jesus. So, the natural disasters that we encounter has really caused all of us to pull together and work together. I got an inbox message from a young lady who we speak in passing, and we sit down very briefly to chat. But her inbox went out all over to pastors, politicians, friends. And on Friday, the church lights were out. Saturday, they were kind of out. And I said to her, "Let me go check, and if they're on, then we are going to move." So, Teresa challenged a lot of people, a lot of pastors, a lot of leaders, to do something because she felt a purpose to do something. She had about six families in her home. At 6:45 in the morning on Saturday, I called, I texted her, I said, "Call me. Our lights are on." Our lights were the only lights on outside. on, on outside on Highway 20. The Dollar General, everybody else. She said, "You're going to open up the church?" She said, "Well, what about service?" I said, "Well, it's people over profit, so we won't have service on Sunday." So, she put out a major call, and I think the city manager said something that was so important, is that social media has a way of getting people attention. Whether it's good or bad, it gets their attention. Her call on social media attracted so many people to want to assist. Even the mayor got a social media post, reached out, and immediately said, "Hey, whatever you all are doing, let us know." He told us where to go pick up water. He had them checking to make sure that in communities that we go visit, to make sure that we keep informing the people in those areas that help is coming. We know how distressful it was. We had over 100 volunteers, and most of those volunteers, they were without power. We, I think, averaged anywhere from 200 to 275 of feeding hot meals twice a day. All of that was done through volunteer efforts. Our church housed anywhere from 25 to 30 people for, from Saturday up until, I mean, we had people laying over watching the game. And then, on yesterday evening, there were neighborhoods that, after the bus that the superintendent allowed us to use, went back, she created a caravan of cars that traveled neighborhoods after neighborhood. The first neighborhood they went into was Meadow, Meadow Woods, the Meadows. As soon as they drove in with over 300 plates of hot meals, their lights came on. But the joy of it was that their lights came on, but they had a hot meal that they was giving. We did this, they did this last night up until 10 o'clock. And there are still some areas that we're serving, the Orange Avenue, the South City, the Kalen area, who still have lights out. So I came to say that, Mayor, thank you, commissioners, and all of the people who served. The sheriff sent deputies constantly through our area. There were deputies. There were so many people that were still dealing with the same situation, but they were serving. I think today sets a, 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 a level of us being able to keep people informed. I think this meeting for me, along with Teresa and Kim, we were just saying that if the public was informed, like we're informed today, it would keep the level of inspiration up. So I think that we could, we should leave here today saying, "Let's keep everybody informed of where we are." If the people on the north side, on the south side, in Orange Avenue, in South City, and Texas Street, if they know that, "Hey, we're getting to you, but what we're doing now is that we're looking at what lines are down that are affecting thousands as opposed to 50, that would give some type of inspiration." Today was very meaningful for me, and this is information
Excuse me, your time is at five minutes.
That we can pass up. Well, thank you so much for the limited amount of time, but the service that you all have been providing has been wonderful, and I certainly thank Teresa and all of the volunteers that help us serve on the days that we've been serving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next speaker is Katie, and then Richard Greco.
Hi, my name's Katie. Um, I live on Robin Hood Road, which is technically the county, but I get power from you guys. Um, first off, I want to say that the people in this city is just absolutely amazing how kind people have been. I've, I'm from Florida, born and raised, but down in central Florida. I've lived through many hurricanes, many storms. I've never had a place where people have been. The, the people, just so kind. Well, I mean, a neighbor that I've never met came up yesterday, and she was like, "Oh, we have power. Come take a shower at our house. Sit in the AC." I'm like, "Oh, thanks. I don't know you, but all right." So it was awesome. We, uh, we've driven around a lot once the roads were stable, because, well, it was hot in our house, and we have AC in our car. And I have seen cops everywhere, just amazing the response. And, and EMS people, too, just out, doing stuff. It's great. But here's the deal. I, um, I actually have training in emergency response. I lived through hurricanes that crisscrossed the states, worked in the EOS, and I cannot say that I feel that what the response has been has been great. I don't want to hear about the people working overnight. That is your job. That is what you are paid to do. You don't get a pat on the back for doing what you're supposed to do. That'd be like me saying, "Hey, I walked into the bank. I didn't rob it. Woo! Give me a gold star." That's not what you do. Own up to the mistakes. And don't talk about how Kate was so bad 35 years ago. I think it was like five when that came through. If you haven't improved in 30 years, dude, you gotta be sad. And, you know, the last thing I want to say is that, honestly, I really didn't know how the government worked here. Mayor Gillum, I just thought you were the pretty face for the city. I didn't think you had a lot of power. But the way it has been represented, it seems like maybe you did have say in things. But the worst part about it is that there was a spitting match between you and the governor, and at a time when the people need to know that the government is together. This was a crappy situation. This wasn't a bad hurricane. This was a storm. This is an old city that doesn't want to tear down trees because they look pretty, but the reality of it is, that puts lives in danger when you can't get power back on. And it's just really upsetting to sit here and listen to the guy that was here earlier say, "Well, you know, it was Labor Day weekend, and like, my people missed their vacation." Well, we all missed our vacation. Don't say stuff like that. That's infuriating to the people who are, like me, over 100 hours without power. And you know what? The funny thing is, is through all of this, I've been trying to teach my children, you know what? We need to be grateful. We have friends who are missionaries in third world countries, who, they don't have power all the time. This is just something we're going through right now. And there's things that we can do to be helpful to other people. But don't sit around and belittle us and say, "Oh, we did a great job. We're doing, you're doing your job." And if you don't accept that the fact that this wasn't the greatest response, then it's very scary to think that you won't try to improve for the next time. Because if a storm comes that has a real hurricane, like what you get down south, the Cat 2, 3, 4, and God forbid, like Katrina, what would we have done? It's just really sad. And I don't want to be grumpy, because the people in this city are so nice, and they're so willing to help, coming out of the woodworks. But it just hurts my heart to hear you guys say, "Oh, you know, we're so proud. You're doing your job." And by the way, working overtime, you guys are going to be making bank. We all know it. You're getting time and a half, maybe two times what your pay is. It's, that's just what happens, man. It, it's not, you guys aren't superheroes. You're doing your job. If you did it without patting yourselves on the back, then you would be superheroes. And I think that's all I have to say.
Richard Greco, and then Sally West.
Richard Greco.
Greg.
Greg. Got it.
Hi, Richard Greco. I've been a Tallahassee resident for longer than I can believe. I think I moved here in 1978. Teach environmental science. I live in Myers Park. So, obviously, I like Tallahassee. What I haven't heard, spoken about here formally, but it seems to be coming from the audience, I think what, in the future, in discussing how to respond to disasters, I think the Tallahassee needs to evaluate itself for its resiliency, in community resilience, which is the ability of communities to withstand, adapt to, and recover from adversity. And what I hear is people struggling with the reality that a hurricane, we can prepare all we want, we can put all the utilities underground, but if a level, something more than a one, we see what happened with a one, a level 2, 3, 4, or 5, we're going to get damaged severely. There's nothing we can do except be prepared and have ways and abilities to respond, and have plans to come back from the damage. We're not going to prevent a hurricane with 120 mile hours wind from ripping up houses and ripping up utilities, or ripping up substations. So I think we have to face the reality of what a natural disaster is, and we shouldn't take for granted all of the nice air conditioning and benefits that we have. I think we forget the reality of the world that we live in. And natural disasters are just that, they're disastrous. Now, my utility came back on last night, right when I was preparing my flashlights to, for the night. And I would just like to, in spite of all the problems, I'd like to thank the mayor, the commission, and the staff, employees of the city. By my calculation, you turned on 15,000 utilities every day for the four days since the utilities went out. And I think that's pretty good. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sally West, and then Chris Oscar, and he is the last speaker for my half, Mayor.
Good morning. I'm Sally West. I live on Bay Shore Drive in Kalarne, and I see Commissioner Miller out walking my dog frequently, so good to see you. I won't beat the dead horse about having better communications. I think that that's been well addressed here. And in fact, a lot of what I was going to say has already been said. So I just have one point that I'd like to make, as I've been crossing out all of my list. Commissioner Maddox, you mentioned about finding out where the communities are where we have vulnerable populations, and I would like to offer up one community, and that's the Westminster Oaks Retirement Community. My parents are 88 years old. They live in a single-family home in Westminster Oaks, on their own still, but they are on temperature-controlled medications, and many people on their streets are on oxygen. They were without power until yesterday morning. One of the things that attracted them to Westminster Oaks was it was a priority community for utilities. My dad remarked that if that's a priority, then they were going to be asked to be taken off the priority list, because I actually got my electricity back before they did. So, we do know where some of those vulnerable populations are. The nursing home on the property does have a generator, so it is an option for people to move into the nursing home, but it's not a realistic option for everybody living in a single-family home or one of the duplexes on that property to move into the nursing home. They don't have the capacity for that. So that is really just for emergencies. So I would like to see that community addressed, and how we're going to get them back on power sooner. I would have much rather seen them get on power before me. And then, one other comment that I would like to just mention is that it is still hurricane season. Hurricane season doesn't end until the end of November. So, we really have no way of knowing whether it's going to be 30 more years before we see another storm, or whether it's going to be three weeks. And I think that we need to be preparing for that, that possibility. Mayor Gillum, I think that you have been, in the face of all this publicity, I think that you have been very graceful. And I would like to commend you for that, and just offer up my thanks to you for remaining calm and remaining polite. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Chris Oscar.
Hello, I'm Chris Oscar. I live at 3712 Sally Lane in the Pine Tip Hills subdivision. Commissioner Maddox, you've been in contact with a lot of our neighbors, and I appreciate that with texts, Facebook, things of that nature. One thing I wanted to say with the communication part, we're still without power. Tal.gov says we had power two days ago on the maps. So, we're communicating, but we're not getting good communication. So we've got to figure out a way to do that. In regards to the whole thing with the out-of-town public companies coming in, one thing there, also, the embedded people are the ones that are telling the citizens that they can't do certain things because they're non-unionized, or they're this, that, or the other. So may speak with those folks and what they tell the community. Because that's where that negativity is coming from. It's not that we don't think you guys are doing your job. It's what we're hearing from the people on the streets. We're not just sitting back, you know, doing whatever. I mean, I've got two generators. I've been circling around my neighborhood, you know, letting people utilize them and take turns running their refrigerators. But we were told the trash was going to come pick up on Saturday. Our normal day was Friday. They didn't show up. Everybody put all their food out there at the street. It's nasty, you know? And they say, "Well, now the holiday, it'll be next Saturday." You can't go two weeks without having your trash picked up. I got two massive trees that fell across the road. I cut them out of the road, cleaned that up. I said, "Can I get somebody to move some of this debris, so that I can continue cutting?" I'm out of space. I filled my yard, my neighbor's yard, everybody's yard. Nope, we're not picking that stuff up right now. Waste Pro came through, picked up a dead refrigerator that had been sitting out there for two weeks. They left my pile of stuff, and they said, "Our supervisor says we're picking up appliances today." Appliances? In the middle of this disaster? And the last thing I'll say is, if this wasn't really a hurricane when it made landfall in Tallahassee, it'd be nice if we don't call it that, because those of us had damage, we have to pay a higher deductible with our insurance if it's a hurricane. If it was a tropical storm and it came to Tallahassee, let's call it that. Because I'm out a bunch, and I need to not be out that, if it can help. I appreciate you guys. Listen to us.
Can we make sure we get the address? I don't know what the status is on the trash, but clearly, that's not acceptable. And then on the debris, the debris picked up, I'm assuming that that is not waiting on the normal schedule of like, bulk, bulky items that we normally do. There's, this is a special situation. Is that right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, two points on Pine Tips. One, there's a fleet of trucks from Lakeland Electric with our folks in them right there now, while you're here. So, I'm hopeful that that'll be shortly done. The second thing is the map. Okay, so the map was, and I didn't know this, I learned this at the EOC yesterday. The map was designed to give people an indication, but the software that we use for the map is talking to the transformers on poles, back to substations, and guessing as to where power is and power isn't based on that. It is not definitive.
Right.
So, it's not foolproof. It's, it's an indicator, and, and that's one of the things we can improve on, absolutely, because people, I, I got hundreds of people that said, "The map shows that I'm on, and I'm not on." So, that's one of the things that, that we can improve on next time.
You know, speaking of the whole management of expectations piece, that is one of the most furious, infuriating parts of it was, we either shouldn't have it, or we should give people very clear instructions that this is not exact. There are approximations that are made, and that it would be slow updating. Given the fact that we had 6 million hits on it, and I'm guessing a lot of that was people refreshing, they're like, "No, you know, I'm not on it, says I'm on," that kind of thing, trying to get updated information. But I would, I would almost, you know, say, "We're probably too far gone at this point to take anything down." But clearly, if it is not one of those, you know, foolproof that we haven't given clear definition of what people can expect if they hit it, we shouldn't have it.
Hey, one more thing.
Here we go.
In regards to that map, one of the ladies in our neighborhood also, you know, she was concerned about, you know, her stuff in her house and everything, and getting a generator. So she says, "I don't have the money to do this, so I'm going to dip into, you know, my retirement, you know, account to do this, and/or not make a car paint," or something like that. And a lot of people went out and bought generators and used them for less than 12 hours, because it came on. But we don't get the information, so that if, if you could put out relative information, like the areas that you're going to be working on, then people could know, "Hey, like you said, it's going to be a week. No problem. You get your generator, you do your thing." But, you know, if you know you're going to get power back, you know, you don't need to go buy that generator and, and, and take it away from somebody that needs to. You know, I mean, I had to go to Live Oak to get gas cans, because there wasn't enough gas cans. You know, everybody was running out of those. So, you know, it, it's one of those things where people are buying things they didn't need because of the bad information we were getting as well. So it's, it's very helpful for those to plan as well that are out there. So...
Thank you again. On the FEMA, maybe we'll know this after we procure someone on the FEMA thing. I don't know if there is an accounting for what individual, individuals' expenses that they incur as a result of the storm. Do you, does anybody have a quick answer on that? Otherwise, we can...
I have a limited knowledge answer, and that is that there are two designations. Obviously, the community would be eligible. And then, if FEMA goes to the individual level, then they could be reimbursed.
Got it. Okay.
There's two designations, the community and then individuals.
Got it. And you...
That's the last speaker.
Okay, commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Maddox.
Just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know you've been living in the EOC, and, and there's a lot of stress on you, and you've done a fantastic job. You've been away from your family as well. And I, I'm not saying that that's not your job to And I'm not saying that that's not your job, to the earlier speaker, we all know what our jobs are. But you're doing yours exceptionally well, and I want to thank you.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Commissioners and, excuse me, staff, I want to thank all the speakers who came and gave their own testimonies and recommendations. Really love the idea on the resiliency piece. In fact, to the extent that, again, getting beyond this, we might even do it in a neighborhood-by-neighborhood setting where we can get input from folks. Because my guess is, is if there's going to be any ordinance changes or anything with regarding how we treat trees and so on and so forth, it will require significant input from the public. So looking forward to that being the case. Mr. Manager, I know you all have more than your share of things to do, so if there's no, nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you. Good work.